I'm calling the meeting to order. We asked the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambrecht?
Here.
Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Commissioner Bunting?
Present.
Commissioner Bailey?
Here. All please stand for the invocation. Christ heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day that you've given to us and we just praise and thank you for all things. We ask Father through these troubling times that we would depend on you and that you would bless us all. We ask Father that you'd especially be mindful of our troops overseas, our troops at home, especially in today's world, Father, our first responders who are really our heroes of the day and we just appreciate that you would give them safeties. We ask all these things, Father, in your precious name, amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Under God. And justice for all, born and unborn.
Thank you, be seated. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yeah, George, I wanted to add a resolution that mailed out or emailed out to everybody. We probably put it under like K three, couldn't we?
Well, we gotta decide where they're gonna put it on yet or Chuck. If you want, if you want that on the agenda, I'd like to have you make a motion to put that on the agenda.
Okay, I'd like to move. Do you want it read or?
No, just move that this be placed on the agenda.
Okay, I'll move that we place this on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think anybody needs to, anytime a commissioner wants anything put on the agenda, they can have it put on. They don't need permission.
I don't think that's parliamentary correct, Jan.
I believe it is. I've done it before.
I think in most cases, we have to vote to put it on.
I have done it before many times.
Sam, you're a parliamentarian, everything they add. Anytime you change the agenda, it takes a motion. So it's, you know, even to approve the agenda, it takes a motion, a second and approval, so.
Okay, I'll make note of this. If ever happens again, I'm gonna nail you on it. This is ridiculous. You have four pages for this meeting and you don't want someone to put something on the agenda. That doesn't make any sense, but I'll go ahead and make the motion. I'll second it.
I think Chuck did make the motion. You're gonna second it?
Yes.
Any discussion? Chuck, you got any discussion?
It's an important item. I think a lot of people have tuned in today on it and I think we should at least discuss it.
Any other discussion?
I guess my question is, do we have the right to discuss it? I guess, you know, it's.
Well, it's a motion. We could discuss putting it on the agenda, Sam.
Alright.
Any other discussion? Motion's been, read back the motion.
To place the resolution on the agenda under K three.
After you get done there, ask clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Lambrecht?
No.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Bailey?
No. No one's had it. Will now be added to the agenda.
My gosh.
Anything else to go on the agenda or anything else? Then I ask to approve the agenda.
Some moved. Support.
Supported. Any other discussion? Ask clerk to call the roll.
I'm sorry, who's supported?
Tim. I did. Tim. I know they all will sound the same.
So to approve the agenda, Commissioner Bunting?
No.
Commissioner Lambrecht?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes. Okay. Next thing we have is brief public comments. We have a lot of people lined up that wanna make a public comment and they do so at this time. So you have a list there, Matt? Yep, yep. So just tell the person that's on or on and have them state their, well, I'll have them state their name. Okay, Scott? Scott Crumbo? Not there.
You might ask if he's on mute, if he has to unmute himself.
I did unmute him.
Oh, okay, okay.
Scott Crumbo? I'll go to the next one then, man. There are a lot of people that wanna talk. Then we'll go back to, anybody that didn't get in, we'll go back later. Scott? Scott showers, you there? Scott?
That's the problem with our system.
Something's going on.
You could unmute everyone and just ask if there is any.
Can we get, yeah, can we get them all on there? Crazy.
I can't hear. It says that I'm unconnected now.
Man, could they do what can I play? Really, I'm confused, everybody.
Yeah, they've already updated it.
Updated it.
Updated it. She'd be there forever, hold.
Have some technical difficulties.
Okay, so everybody's gonna be muted now. Let me unmute.
You've got Steve Johnson on the screen. You could unmute him. No, that's out of order, but.
Let me get our order numbers.
Maybe he doesn't wanna come. I don't know if he wants to say anything. I got a picture up there.
Like we have seventy-one participants. That's pretty cool.
So what are we doing here?
We're trying to get the public out, Chuck.
Okay, 'cause I have a parliamentary point of order as soon as you're ready.
Okay, well, let's go do that while we're waiting for them then.
Okay, I would maintain that the emergency rules that we're operating under are expired and actually we can't even meet because the governor's powers and all of the, of all the orders expired last Thursday at midnight. And we're back to the other situation where three of us have to be at the meeting and two could participate over the internet.
Do we know that?
My understanding was today that the Attorney General rules in her favor and that her order does stand.
It's a pretty loose order and this is all gonna end up in court. We're no longer, we're no longer a constitutional republic. We don't have a legislative body that's operating or being allowed to operate. We're, we're in a bad place here, a bad place.
Well, Chuck, when you state things like that, I'd like to have the exact order because I believe what happened was we went under this video conferencing under a different order.
All those, all those orders expired last Thursday.
What's that?
All those orders expired last Thursday with her agency powers.
That's why, that's why, the way I understand it, that's why the Congress and the governor had odds, but today, her Attorney General, the Attorney General of the State of Michigan, restated that all her orders are in place. So the courts will have to decide it. I am just going under the orders that I received and will continue on and if it's muted, it's muted.
Well. Have we ever had sixty-some people show up at the meeting? I mean, you've got people that wanna speak, they can't speak. We're, we're in a very bad place here.
Yeah, okay. Well, we just had some difficulties. I think Matt's got that ironed out, so.
Alright, well, let's go forward then.
Yeah, whatever.
You have.
Whatever you got.
You have the ability to limit them to three minutes. Can you repeat that for, one zero nine eight, the phone number that ends in one zero?
Oh.
I believe they've run it unmuted now.
Alright, one, the phone number ending in one zero nine eight, if you'd like to speak, indicate.
And unmute your, unmute.
And unmute, unmute yourself if you are.
You don't have a name with that, do you, Matt?
Michelle Worthy.
Michelle Worthy, if you are there, unmute your phone and the board is ready to hear you.
We hear somebody.
Michelle Worthy?
Hello?
Yes.
Just keep moving till we find somebody. We'll have to go back.
So this would be five three one eight.
Five three one eight. Home number ending in five three one eight. Please unmute yourself.
You have a name, Angie?
No, I don't. Add on that one.
Okay.
Next.
Amanda Thomas, if you're there, unmute yourself or the board is ready to hear you.
We're hearing somebody.
We've got seventy-two people. Surely someone is.
And next we've got Andy Warnet.
I'm sorry, the name?
Andy Warnet.
Andy Warnet? Hello? Hello, Andy? Now this isn't working. What's going on?
Well, it looks like, now this Andy looked like he was still muted and no video on.
Right, some people may not wanna talk either. Some people may just be logging in to see what is.
Yeah.
Somebody's picture just came up.
Maybe just mentioned picture came up.
Hello, hello, I see your picture. I see your face. Can you say hello?
You can unmute yourself.
There she is.
You unmute yourself.
Up in the corner.
Up in the corner, there's a, up in the corner, there's a.
Hi, guys.
Oh, there you go. We got you now.
I did not, I did not call in. I'm actually just listening in. However, it says that all the participants are muted. Just to let you know for who have actually questions.
Yeah, the, the, they can hear us though.
Everyone can unmute themselves individually.
Yeah. Each person can unmute themselves just like you just did.
Okay, well, I will go back unmute. I didn't call in any questions. I'm just listening.
Okay, alright, so. Let me get somebody else up there.
And this would be a Matt.
Maybe we could do a whole call that if anyone wants to speak, they can like, put their video on so we can see that they want to speak.
Or even just unmute themselves.
Do what? Matt? What are you talking about? Matt, what?
If, if somebody would like to speak, go ahead and unmute yourself.
And begin.
Alright, if somebody would like to speak, just please now unmute yourself. That will help a lot.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I'm gonna hang up my phone. Alright, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, okay, so, how long do we have to speak?
Three minutes.
Alright, so I'm gonna make this.
Excuse me, can I have your name, please? I don't know who you are.
I'm sorry, George, this is Yvette Clark.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I'm gonna make this real quick. I'm gonna talk fast here since I've only got three minutes. I have a lot to say.
Okay, I know you, I know you always got a lot to say.
Thank you. I'm gonna take that as a compliment, George. Alright, I'm the owner of the gym twenty-four seven fitness. First, I'm just gonna start saying that, that I tried to open my business yesterday. Well, I did hear talks that the executive orders aren't in place as you guys have been told by the Attorney General. I have information from multiple attorneys that that is incorrect. So therefore I was guided by my attorneys to go ahead and open business, knowing full well that I would have police officers calling and reporting that we were open and according to what everybody's beliefs are, it is illegal and that is incorrect. I did have my attorney come yesterday to the business and we did file a lawsuit against Keith Cushing yesterday. He was forcing the police officers to issue citations if I did not close my business down. Rather than defying what the police officers were trying to do, I went ahead and agreed to do that, okay? Now, I just wanna help you guys understand that there's a lot of businesses, obviously, all over Gratchit County that are going under, okay, and they're not ever gonna be able to turn around. And I'm trying to save mine. I have saved twenty thousand dollars of my own hard-earned money for years and used that to start my business as of last year. I have applied for the SBA three different times. I have applied for PPL and have not qualified for any of that. I have applied for unemployment. I'm not getting any of that. This resolution was created for our elected officials who passed this resolution in defense of the people of Gratchit County and business owners. And I'm not happy at the fact that three or four of you decided to turn that down. So I'm going to ask, because you guys turned that down and you are not representing the businesses, I would like to ask you for donations to keep my business going because I refuse to have it taken from me. This is unconstitutional, okay? What is happening? There is a massive impeachment, multiple lawsuits going against the governor. You all took an oath to follow the Constitution of Michigan and right now you're violating that. I am done. Walking, I'm done with my three minutes. Thank you.
Thanks, Yvette, for your comments. Next.
Can anybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so this is Liz Dudek. I own Stay Fit Gratchit County, the gym in Ithaca, and I stand a hundred and ten percent behind Yvette. If the Walmarts of the world, the Targets of the world, the Costcos of the world can have hundreds and hundreds of people through their stores daily and legally and they don't have half the, the safety measures, small gyms like ours do, it, it, it's a travesty that we can't open. It is unconstitutional. And I'm gonna tell you that I'm responsible for a lot of the people that are on this call today, okay? And we want Chuck Murphy to be heard. We want that resolution to be read. And actually, I have three minutes. I'm gonna read it. It says, "We, the Board of Commissioners of Gratchit County, Michigan, trust the citizens, businesses, organizations, and other entities of Gratchit County to act responsibly in light of this COVID-nineteen situation, as they have for the past two incredible months." And that we should be treated just like so-called essential employees that have been operating under, you know, under this for a long period of time. And I agree with Yvette that it is, it, it's appalling that three of you would, would turn down, you know, Chuck's agenda addition. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Liz.
This is, George, this is Scott showers.
Hi, Scott.
Hi. Hey, I, I understand the last several weeks have proven to be some of the most challenging circumstances that many people really faced in our, our lifetime. And I just wanna start out by saying something that all of you heard before and that governments are instituted among people deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. And that's why we elect you as our representatives in our local communities to represent we, the people. One of those roles of government is really to protect. And early on in this proclaimed pandemic, none of us really knew for certain what we were dealing with and we continually heard about models that were predicting millions of people dying. As time went on, we now know that those models were completely off-base and wrong, but to protect the people, we were told to shelter in place. Now, time's gone on and every day really is bringing new revelations and greater understanding that this was not as bad as what was predicted, especially if you are a healthy person with a strong immune system. So now we're seeing a great deal of anecdotal evidence suggesting that the virus has been here much longer and it's been more widespread than first estimated. There's some immunologists now telling us that sheltering in place may be actually weakening our immune systems. On top of that, we've got people publicly looking at one another suspiciously if they're fellow human beings as contagious pathogen carriers. And guess what? That's been true since the beginning of the human species. The difference now is the fear being sold by the media and elected officials with political ambitions. But we must be safe and we're told from the top down to continue sheltering in place. This top-down, one-size-fits-all approach has had the effect of damaging people's incomes, their business. This top-down approach has been a complete mismanagement of human capital in the state of Michigan. We in Gratchit County are not Wayne County and we're not Oakland County and this top-down approach is not appropriate any longer. But we're told it must be safe, so keep sheltering in place. It's understandable the desire to keep people safe because the people making those decisions are doctors who have taken that Hippocratic oath of first do no harm. And the results have been narrow choices with limited strategies to employ. Continuing to employ this one-size-fits-all, narrow choice broadly is doing great harm to our economy and local businesses. Someone trained in business or economics would approach this differently now by asking the question, "How do I do the least harm?" You know, and it was my understanding that we were gonna, the Board of Commissioners might take a look at this resolution. I'm extremely disappointed that, that it was not even examined and looked at today. It's really time for us to switch gears, perceive it as a strategy of do the least harm.
Thanks, Scott.
Reject unlawful ethics from the top down. I want you guys to lead and ladies, lead by example and show how the people of Gratchit County have elected the right people at the right time to demonstrate we can govern ourselves. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Next.
Hey, George, this is Mandy Simons.
Hi, Mandy.
Hi. So I own Chasing Fireflies, the kids boutique in Alma. People don't know that. I guess that's my concern is why are small businesses like mine, who I might get ten or fifteen people in my store the entire day, how in my, I have twenty-five hundred square foot, how am I more dangerous than the hundreds of people in Walmart? It doesn't make any sense to me. I reached out to Rick Outman this past week to ask him, you know, could I open? What was, you know, would I be in trouble, that sort of thing? His response was, "It will depend on what our local government enforces." So this falls on you guys to decide, like, how am I that much more dangerous than Walmart? Or getting your food at McDonald's or anything else that is going on that's taking hundreds of people a day through there, but my ten people that supports my family isn't allowed?
Okay, thank you. Next.
I can go next. Steve Johnson?
Hi, Steve.
Hello, thank you. I just let you know, the host has got everyone's video feed muted. I tried to open my video feed. It says the host has it muted. I'd like to share all the frustrations that everyone said. I'd like to point out, I've been reading the Executive Order twenty twenty dash seventy and what I see could potentially eliminate many of these people's frustrations is line twelve talks about, "Any store that remains open for in-store sales under section nine F or section ten C of the order must establish lines to regulate entry in accordance to subdivision of this section with markings for patrons to enable themselves to stand six feet apart from one another while waiting. Stores should also explore alternative lines to allowing customers to wait in their cars for a text message, phone call, or to, to enable the social distancing and accommodate seniors with disabilities. B, must adhere to the following restrictions. For stores less than fifty thousand square feet of customer floor space, they must be limited to the number of people in the store by twenty-five percent of the total occupancy limits established by the state fire marshal or local fire marshal. For stores more than twenty thousand square feet, they must limit the consumers to the store at one time excluding employees to four people per one thousand square feet of customer floor space. Create at least two hours per week for dedicated shopping time for vulnerable populations, which for purpose of this order is people over sixty, pregnant women, and those with chronic conditions like heart disease, diabetes, and lung disease. The Director of the Department in Health and Human Services is authorized to issue an emergency order varying the capacity limits as described in the subsection as necessary to protect the public health. They may continue to sell goods other than necessary supplies. Of the sale of such goods is an ordinary course of business. D, must consider established curb-sized pickup to reduce the in-store traffic emitted, I'm sorry, mitigate outdoor lines." I think any in-store sale should be allowed to fall under this and not a pick-and-chosen of the Walmart, the Target, or any other business. It should apply for any store that can operate in-store sale and can adhere to these guidelines and maintain a safe social distance. That is all I have, gentlemen.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next. Anyone else would like to make a public comment?
If anybody's established by telephone to unmute yourself, you do have to dial star six.
Star six to unmute yourself if you have simply dialed in by phone.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Sean Sparks. My husband and I own Sparks Pickle Company. We live in Gratchit County in the city of Ithaca and I would echo everything that Scott showers said. I would like to reiterate, though, that Gratchit County has many, many businesses and this is not good for our county. It is certainly not good for our state. Many, many people are not getting unemployment. This is, this is really gonna take Gratchit County down and the fact that a few of you arbitrarily decided not to hear it at all speaks volumes. And I would hope that when we go to the polls, that we will speak volumes too. You are there to represent us. You didn't even care to take the time to read anything that Chuck had sent over. And to me, and I know to many of us, look how many people have tuned in, that speaks volumes. So you're on notice that we will vote and when we do, you won't have to ask why. Thank you.
Thank you. If you're on phone, you have to unmute yourself.
Star six.
Star six. Hello, anybody there?
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
This is Wayne Andrews. I own Pail Rider Training, and between me and my wife, we have three small businesses here. My whole thing is, is why is we are a county not looking at how this is affecting our county as a whole when we only have 25 sick people in this county? So look at the actual numbers. First off, there is so much conflicting information out there that nobody knows what's true. If you hear something good from one source that's a reputable medical or legal source, you hear the same exact opposite thing from another reputable medical or legal source. And we got 25 sick people in Grashut County and two deaths, and both of those deaths were elderly people. That's terrible. Nobody wants to see anybody die. But 1 in 22,000 people in this county have died from this supposedly. And we're shutting down hundreds of businesses and putting hundreds of people out of work because there's a few sick people. It just doesn't make any sense to me why you guys aren't standing up and fighting for us. I don't have a whole lot to say. I kind of tuned in to see what the law enforcement aspect was of this and what you guys, as our county commissioners, were going to say about it. But it just kind of boggles my mind how we haven't been hit by this yet. Our whole economy in this county is being completely shut down and destroyed. That's pretty much all I got to say.
Thanks, sir.
If I may add to Wayne's statement on the case count of COVID in Grashut County, it needs to be known that a good 10 of those are from out-of-county patients that were transferred to one of the living centers.
Yes.
And that does not, you know, like he pointed out, we're well under the 0.2% of the mortality rate of COVID in Grashut County. Now, I understand and I respect what the social distancing is supposed to do and flatten the curve, and it is apparent that that is doing that. And with those low numbers that everyone's been pointing out, it just strengthens the fact that every point of shop should be able to accommodate under the new Executive Order 2020-70, not just certain businesses.
Did we get a name on who was that speaking?
That was Steve Johnson.
Yeah, he just came back into.
All right.
Yeah. Anyone else? Hello, anybody else on the line?
Star six to unmute yourself if you are just calling in by telephone.
Anybody else? Anybody left the meeting?
We did have a couple. We're down to 76 now.
There's still quite a few out there.
I think people are probably just listening.
Again, yeah.
Okay.
I guess the only suggestion I would make is that if they're joined by the app and they don't know how to unmute yourself within the app, they could just call in by phone, join that way.
Okay. Call what number? That number? Do you have a number for them?
Yeah. Yeah, the number to dial in would be 888-788-0099. And then tonight's meeting ID is 99142916150. And we'll ask for a password. That password is 04242020.
Repeat.
It is that to put up on the website right?
Yeah, Matt, is that all on the website?
It is all on the website.
It's on the website.
Okay.
Okay, could you tell them where to go to get it, for sure?
They would go to thegrashutmi.com. They would go to the Government tab. And then they would go to Board of Commissioners. And then at the top of that page, in red text, it talks about the May 5th meeting, and there's a link there, click. And you'll see the meeting notice. And within that meeting notice, it does have that number.
Okay, what I propose to do is we'll continue on with the meeting. And then if anybody calls, we can stop the meeting and listen to what they've got to say.
We've got an additional period of public comments at the end, George, though.
Yeah.
I got one at the end too. But if anybody calls in, I don't want to lose them. So with everybody's permission, we'll just stop what we're doing and listen to what the folks have to say. Okay? And don't stop trying to call in, folks. We want you all to be able to speak. Okay, we have consideration of consent calendar board minutes communication recommendations from committees. So moved. Support. I'm supportive. Ask for a caller.
Commissioner Lambrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
This is to approve the minutes and such, yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Okay. Let's get it.
Okay, it's a fairly long one tonight, but I'll go through it as quickly as I can. First of all, the Salt and Annex Building, with the lifting of the prohibition on construction effective this Thursday, we are resuming work on the building. Plumbers will be in right, right, early in the morning on Thursday to move any plumbing that's necessary and then to get the toilet and the sink in the new restroom. The existing restroom was not ADA compliant, so we're doing the work to expand it. When that work is completed, we can finish the walls and floors and get folks moved in. I have asked that all of this work be completed not later than June 15th.
Can I interrupt you right now? We've got, we've got someone up on the screen. Oh, they lost.
I'm here, can you see me?
Yeah, I can't, I did see you, now I don't see you.
Okay, well, this is Dan with Four Seasons Gym in St. Louis, Michigan.
Okay.
I, I would like to say I agree with the other two gyms in Grashut County. We moved here in 2005, and we worked for the schools in Alma Ever Sands. Our local gym was closing there in St. Louis, and they were gonna shut down completely, auction off all the equipment. So we closed out our retirement from the school, bought the gym in St. Louis a year ago, put over $80,000 into this community for us to lose our business now. We've taken that business from 100 clients to the day we closed, on March 16th, we closed with 554 clients in that gym. We bought the building next to us, adding another 12,000 square feet to be closed 30 days after the renovation was completed. And we're trusting all of you guys to help us keep our business. Like everyone else, we've applied for SBA loans, we've applied for unemployment with no success on any of it. I did receive a grant from Mid-Michigan Small Businesses of $500, and that's all we've been able to maintain since this has started, with a family of five kids and all the work we put into this community, with the schools, with ourselves. And then if we try and open up, before this even started, we put in procedures as soon as we found out the first case in Michigan. We've had Cintas, we've hired Cintas come in and clean. We've moved our equipment apart from each other. We put in hand sanitizer stations. We've changed our cleaning solution. We've hired Cintas to do all of our towels daily. We've, we've done so much to change our practices and make sure everyone's safe. And I just don't understand why, as everyone else said, Walmart and everyone else can let people in there to buy flowers and garden stuff. And, and there's been tons of studies saying that if you're not healthy, your immune system can't fight this.
Hey, Dan, this is Jan Bunting, the county commissioner in your district. I want to let you know that I'm doing conference calls with DC every week now. And they've been asking, what are some of the things that are going on in the community? I have a conference call tomorrow at 11:30. If you, I live right across where it used to be the fire department, right here on the corner, kitty corner from the chemical bank, upstairs apartment one. Anybody that would like to come and be on this conference call can come to my apartment and be, you're welcome to listen to what's going on.
Yeah, that's, that's the other thing. As, as the owner, we've extended for the whole county EMS, fire, police department, everything, since the day we opened the gym, they could work out in our facility for free. And those.
That's great.
I think I'm running across the street from you.
Yeah, yeah. And those, those people, I've been a firefighter from 1992 until 2007. And so I know what the physicalness needs, I know what they go through. And even for them to not be able to come out and work out in our facility, which they, they did, they came in every day. I had St. Louis Police Department, Alma, Rockinridge, I've had all of them in there. And they're, they're on the front lines, but yet they can't keep themselves healthy anymore.
Can you get, call me either after this call or call me tomorrow, anytime. Call me yet today. And because I'm doing, I've been doing conference calls, this will be my sixth one with DC, with different groups or different departments. And they are very concerned about whether people are getting their unemployment or their, the money that they're, that they put out there for you. And so we need to contact them. Anybody that's listening to this, would you please get ahold of me? Go online and just look under County Commissioner Jan Bunting, and my phone number should come up, or in the front of the phone book. And we'll, we'll get, I'll contact DC about this. We'll do it tomorrow.
Okay.
Dan, that would be helpful, but I think what he really needs is to get his business open.
Yes, well, yeah.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dan, for your comments. Appreciate it.
But they might be able, he might be able to get money from, from back, you know, the last couple of months, but you're right. We do need to get things opened up.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah. Thank you, Chris.
Sure, I can continue until the next caller comes in. Continuing, just talking with you again a little bit about the landfill. During this period, I've had Ryan Sullivan working out at the landfill, filling some slums. This is something that we are required to do. It's a public health and safety issue. And so he has been continuing work on that. We do need more dirt out there, but we are waiting for the restrictions to be lifted before we can get more dirt moved out there. But again, trying to attend to what could be a public health and safety issue. Moving on to the blight issue, haven't forgotten about that. I've sent a draft ordinance to the prosecutor's office for review. The participating townships would like assurance that the prosecutor's office will be able to prosecute should the need arise, and we hope it won't, but should the needs arise with the proposed language. This is also something that the townships want before they take it to their boards for approval. Jennifer Shepherd has reviewed it and approved it, but she would like the prosecutor to review it also. It's on his desk, and this is pending. The airport review, another big topic of interest here. I've been in contact with Stephanie Ward, our project manager, on the review. The current plan for scheduling is to have Stephanie appear at our first meeting in June. We hope to be open to back up and can have more direct, direct, more direct presentation to the members of our community. I'm communicating with the airport authority members about also attending the meeting so that there can be a joint review of those two bodies and that a Q and A period can take place. Commissioner Murphy, that's something you have specifically asked about. And so we're factoring that into the scheduling.
Will they be able, will they be able to review it prior to the meeting?
As continuing with my comments, I've asked her to make the report available to both bodies a week or so in advance, so that you have time to review it prior to the meeting. I do need to get this firmed up with the airport authority member, so I'm just letting you know the direction that I'm moving and what I'm trying to get put into place for you all. On the COVID-19 issue, I've been in contact with department heads and elected officials throughout the process, getting ongoing input and feedback from them about what their needs are. And I can answer questions about many of the individual departments if you, if you have any. I did want to get guidance from you tonight on reopening. These are my general thoughts about this. And I would like to hear from each of you commissioners about whether you think I'm on the right track. Unless the governor extends the stay-home order, and I'm betting that she won't, at least in its current form, I propose to ask all staff to return to work on-site on Monday, May 18th, and to resume their regular work schedules. Pursuant to the governor's order, we, and we will require that all staff continue to wear masks when in public or open areas of our building, if they are medically able to do so. Staff are welcome to bring their own masks, but we will provide them for those who do not have one. We would continue to require the entryway health screening of staff for at least a few weeks as we see how things develop. This involves the completion of the health questionnaire and having their temperatures taken. And then we would require that all members of the public go through the same health screening, the questionnaire, and having their temperatures taken. I spoke with Sheriff Morris today, and he had indicated that that, that's something that he and his, his staff are willing to continue doing. We will continue with our enhanced cleaning, but we will also, and already have engaged staff in each office. I've instructed that those offices that do not have them yet, that there be spray bottles with the antivirus. I've instructed that those offices that do not have them yet, that there be spray bottles with the antivirus, um, uh, substance. Paper towels and gloves be placed, uh, in each office so that staff themselves can wipe down surfaces. Uh, after each customer or at regular intervals. On the, uh, entryway screening, uh, anyone with a, uh, temperature of a hundred degrees or higher, or who may answer yes to any question. Would be denied access to the building. However, we would consult with them about what services they need and we would, uh, determine how we can provide them services in another way. So this would be denial of entry, uh, for the protection of all other people in the building, but not a denial of service. Question I, I, I really have for you is this next item. Um, when George and Angie and the sheriff and I met last week to discuss reopening, the idea was raised, although not decided. About limiting the number of people who can be in the building at any given time. Um, the courts are doing their own planning about how to handle people coming into the building. Uh, Judge Sullivan sent something out today, beginning to engage, uh, the judges and court staff in some discussion about that. And, uh, that would be for that side and that group to determine how to do that, but again, they, they are taking a look of that, at that. Um, we would of course require social distancing in each office. If there's a lineup, folks would be asked to stand six feet apart, this is kind of like what we're seeing in the grocery store. We're placing chairs in waiting areas, uh, six feet apart, we can only hope that people don't take those chairs and move them back together. But we're trying to do some marking of that and to create that, uh, safe spacing. So I'd like to hear what your thoughts are about any of this and wherever we go with this, I would like to drop this into a policy. And these provisions would be in effect as of May eighteenth. So looking for discussion of any of that, uh, Mr. Chair, or if it all sounds about right, um, we can go with that.
Anyone else got anything they want to add to that? I'd say you're pretty well on the mark, uh. I think we have to. For the guidelines and then follow the health department's recommendations.
I, I would like to add that, uh, I, we are in regular contact with our, uh, health department representatives. They do send out daily updates, as does Dan Warden. Uh, so we are accessing that health information that's being issued and the recommendations. Uh, by our local health department, uh, on a regular basis. So all of this would reflect, um, what their general thinking is and, and then of course, agree or disagree. I think we feel bound by, at least for now, uh, the, the governor's order and trying to follow, uh, those directives as well. We can certainly change any of this if some of the restrictions are lifted, but this would be a launching off point for us.
Got it?
Yeah.
Tracy, Tracy, uh, Tracy, did you mention that, uh, we would be taking temps before you come in also?
Yes, yes, we're doing that now, Sam, anyone, um, with a temperature of a hundred degrees or above. Uh, is not to enter the building, um, and proposing to do that for the public as well. One item I failed to mention is, uh, limiting the numbers of people in the elevator. It's a pretty tight space and so we would, uh, limit that to two, recommend it be one, but one to two people. Uh, so that they can maintain some, some spacing there.
Also, you probably said it, but I'm thinking of a lot of different things right now. How about crowding, in other words? Um. A person comes in, they go, deal in the courthouse somewhere, but they got grandma and grandpa and four of the kids with them.
Well, y- you raised two issues, the crowding issue and, um, uh, the. I, I want to talk with the sheriff about what he's willing to require that his deputies require and, and enforce. But, you know, the safe distancing, the six feet apart, we could put the Xs on the floor and frankly, I think we'll be doing something like that in each of our. Uh, offices at public counters, like specifically, I think of the clerk's office, the treasurer's office, the register of deeds. I would propose we do, uh, the same thing in the front entryway. There are, uh, you know, the grocery stores have asked, um, that people not bring family members. That you don't bring the whole bunch into, um, into the space while shopping. I, we can try to do that, the enforcement could be difficult, but I ask for your guidance on that. If, uh, Sheriff, you think, uh, you, uh, your deputies, you and your deputies would be comfortable restricting. Uh, people coming into the courthouse, say if people are bringing children in. Um, wondering what your thoughts are about your folks having to enforce that.
Tracy, I think you'd have to take it by a case by case basis. Now, if you got somebody getting married in district court.
Yeah.
And they have four children, you know, that would be a special circumstance where you're probably going to allow that. If anybody's be coming into the courthouse to get a, uh, passport and they got their four kids with them, I would hope that they would be. Uh, mindful of what's going on and, and not do that. Um, as far as keeping six feet social distancing, um, we gotta let people decide how they're gonna do that. And for my guys to try to police that would be almost impossible. Cause you could get a call up in an office, you got two people standing next to each other, time we get there, they could be both gone. So it's, it's gotta be a case by case basis.
Gotcha, the scenario I worry a little bit about is, uh, mom or dad coming for a court appearance, they're due there at nine o'clock. Um, there's not time to take the children back home or to find childcare, they would miss their court appearance. So, uh, i- if you're comfortable with this, I can draft something that allows the deputies to review that case by case and maybe. Speak with you about that. Uh, shall we, shall we go that route?
Yeah, and I think that, you know, if we, if we can at least get that out to the public, whether it's on our website or through the media. You know, please don't bring unnecessary people to the courthouse if at all possible. You know, until we can get by this, I think that would be the best situation.
We'll put it on our website and, uh, if the board would like, I can prepare and issue a press release.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah, I gotta have some guidance when we open up.
Okay.
Anything else?
Tracy?
Yes.
Almost everything you've mentioned, other than some of the, the small details you're just talking about. Is covered in the Mid-Michigan Health Department April sixth, um, emergency order. And every business in the county could operate under that, that's all I have to say.
All right, uh, next thing is our commissioners committee reports, and I know most of us haven't been to a lot of committees and I'm gonna break precedent a little bit. We had a lot of people concerned and public comments and they made a lot of comments. And if you feel like you would like to respond to some of those comments or put your feelings out there, how they feel. Uh, I would like to have you do it this time, uh, so we normally call on Chuck first, so.
All right, well, I don't know really what to say, uh, our, our people in Gracie County are hurting. Especially our businesses. And, uh. Absolutely, the state government is operating not as a constitutional republic like we're, we're formed. And it's a, just a terrible situation. Uh, part of my resolution was read, I'd like to read the rest of it, uh, right from the beginning. Uh, we, the Board of Commissioners of Gracie County, Michigan, trust the citizens, businesses, organizations and other entities of Gracie County. To act responsibly in light of this COVID nineteen situation. As they have in the past two incredible months. Therefore be it resolved that the citizens, businesses, organizations and other entities of Gracie County, Michigan. Should be able to operate under the April sixth Mid-Michigan District Health Department Emergency Order. Number twenty dash two. Just as all the essential employees of the county have been operating under this for a long time. Or for, uh, this incredible period. Um, I'm just sick. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin?
You know, I, I guess I'll address why I didn't want to add the resolution to the agenda and it really is two things. One is, you know, with a topic like this or any resolution, you know, there is a process. Really to get anything in the board packet, which is the week before and you can do it up until the end of the week. Um, submit it to the clerk, so it becomes part of the public record and that's really part of the transparency of government. You know, the way to, to introduce a resolution is not, uh, the day before the meeting, email it to people. Tell somebody on Facebook to put it out and then kind of, you know, let things happen, you know? Because even if it's something that we want to do or don't want to do, you know, there's now all of a sudden people, you say, why, why, where did this come from? You know, it wasn't in the board packet, you know, lots of people, including the press, look at the board packet, even when they decide whether or not it's worth it to, to attend our meetings and, and cover things. So I think that's one issue and that's just something that we as commissioners really need to adhere to, because we do it for the benefit of the public. The other issue is, we do not have the authority to change state rules and regulations, whether we like them or not. Um, you know, we exist as county government under the state government and, you know, we may or may not like the rules that they follow. I mean, this is kind of basic, you know, and I, and I get not everybody understands this because it was a long time since you had high school civics. But we don't have the authority to tell our people, you don't have to follow certain rules. We, we can't do that and, and by doing that, it creates a tremendous confusion. For example, um, and, and I'm very sympathetic, um, to the business owners, I get it. And, and I'm especially sympathetic to the gym owners because I like going to the gym, in fact. And some of you gym owners might notice that ancient solar flux behind me that I, I still use, thank God, because I can't go to the gym. But, uh, but the, the reality is, you know, one of you mentioned that, that the prosecutor, you know, issued an order. And the prosecutor's also an elected official, you know? Are we saying that, you know, we're, we're on top of the prosecutor, well, constitutionally, we're not. Um, you know, we're elected officials with different roles and our role is not a law making role, we just don't have that authority. You know, there are certainly things we can do, um, some of you are aware, uh, the board chair and myself actually contacted not just the governor's office several weeks ago. But also, more importantly, contacted, you know, our lobbying agency, the Michigan Association of Counties. You know, with some very specific concerns, you know, about outdoor work, about construction. About, you know, having different rules for rural areas than urban areas. Um, you know, garden centers and, you know, the good thing is, we got an immediate response from the Michigan Association of Counties. They were actually meeting with the governor the next day. And I'd like to think that some of our thoughts made it into her thinking, because three of those things now have been accomplished. Construction starts on the seventh and I know there is a group of business leaders right now, you know, who are trying to figure out, you know, what should be the rules for regionalization. That's incredibly frustrating, I know, um, but we, we can't do, you know, what a lot of you would like us to do. We, we don't have the authority to do it as much as we'd like to do it. You know, it, it's kind of like, you know, all right, I'm on the Parks and Rec board, the Parks and Rec board, you know, exists as part of one of our boards under the Board of Commissioners. And the Parks and Rec board has a rule, just like we have a rule that says expenditures over a certain amount of money have to be approved by the Board of Commissioners. And it'd be like the Parks and Rec board saying, well, we don't have to follow that rule, you know, we can approve something that's more than that, you know? You know, because they're just gonna tell us no. Well, they can't do that because they just don't have that authority. And again, we don't have the authority to, to tell our people, hey, you don't have to follow the rules of the state, especially when we just got, uh, an attorney general opinion. You know, even, you know, Mike Schurke, who's the, you know, the head of the senate, the state senate, you know, who happens to be a Republican, you know, said, you know, follow the order. You know, get the petition drive going, we're gonna sue, but for now, and you just said this yesterday, follow the orders, because that's the law.
Okay, thank you.
Well, there's a higher laws, the constitution, it's being, it's being shredded.
I understand that, Chuck.
Right, Chuck, and, and this is the problem though, you know, we, you know, as, as, as keen as our legal minds are, and I don't know how keen they are. But we do not have the authority interpret, to interpret the constitution on our own, you know, the judicial branch does that and I'm sure they'll weigh in on this, you know, prior to that. You know, the chief law enforcement official of the state is the attorney general, you know, and the attorney general just weighed in on. Now again, somebody can challenge that, but we can't just follow the laws that we like and disobey the ones that we don't and say, well, the constitution gives me the right to do that.
Well, we, we all took an oath to that constitution, so I, I, people are hurting, there isn't time to go.
Yeah, Chuck, I think we, I think we understand that.
Yeah, okay.
And I know you're frustrated, Sam?
Well, I'm a businessman in Gracie County and, and, um, I'm seeing some of the end results of some of this and, um. I think that people are hurting and I think there's a lot of problems with. People having their loved ones taken to a hospital a month ago and not being able to go in and say goodbye to them and then die alone. And then have me tell them, you know, we can only do so much and you can only be here a few hours and you can only do this. So I understand that and I understand it with families I deal with every day. But the other thing that, that was one of my concerns here with this, this thing with Chuck had brought up, is that. It was just like the gun thing, we got it the day before, we got this the day before yesterday, a resolution from you, have a lot of people fired up about it. And maybe it makes it a good campaign or whatever it is, I don't understand it, but you just got done asking Tracy if we're gonna make sure that airport authority has that information a week before. So they have information on it, we didn't get this a week before, we got it yesterday. And, and, um, I think that's kind of disappointing and how we shouldn't do business like that. And, um, and this is the second time it has happened and, and, and I, I guess I don't care for that.
Dan?
Yes, um, actually I have a lot to say. First of all, I think that this has become very political about being closed down. It seems like every time that they've had a protest down in Lansing, the next day, the governor gets up and says, two more weeks. And I think it's become very political. I think that we're past the worst part of it and I think that there's parts of Michigan that haven't, you know, that's very, um. Like you up north where there's not as very, very many people, that they don't need to have all these rules and regulations or they should be able to open up their stores. And I think most people are very careful about what they're doing and how they're doing it. Nobody wants to see anybody get sick or anybody die, but also we have to get, we've got to open our businesses and get back going again. Um, I have watched this for the last couple of months, especially with the protesting down in Lansing, and the next day, we get two more weeks added on. A week goes by and they protest again and without waiting until the sixteenth of May, they had two more weeks on to how long we're gonna have to be closed down. Also, I wanted to tell you, I was in Shawassee County in the last two weeks, Shawassee County, Isabel County and around Gracie County. And it doesn't make sense, I see a little store opened up that, because they sell, uh, maybe plumbing, uh, supplies. But you go over someplace else where it's a little bit bigger and they have plumbing and groceries, but they can't open. And a lot of these things don't make a lot of sense. I think people should be able to open up their business and if you feel that you might catch something, then you don't go, you stay home. If I feel bad or I feel sick, I don't go out and, and spread it or I don't go out thinking that I might catch something from someplace. Or if I feel like I'm not feeling good and maybe I might, actually I work at the schools and I go there and the kids have got the flu all the time there or they're not feeling good. Not one time have I ever said, I can't be here because these kids are not feeling good, I still go anyway and I have never caught anything. And I think that's how most people feel. Um, some people do, they're a little older, maybe they have, uh, heart problems or diabetic or, um. You know, uh, health reasons or health problems and maybe they will stay home more or longer because of that reason. But I think we're all grownups and I think we all, um, take responsibility for our actions and what we do and do not want to do. Um, I have to say that I agree with Chuck, but also, um, I'm for the people, I'm for the people that need to open up. These people need to open up and if you feel you're gonna catch something, then you just don't go over there, go someplace else or stay home. But, um, there's a lot of stuff throughout the three counties that I've been into, one county can do something and the other county can't do it, that doesn't make a lot of sense. And I'd be glad to name companies or little stores where, where. stores where, where a little bakery is open, they just sell bakery goods, but you've got a place that sells plumbing and groceries, and they can't open up. So it didn't make a lot of sense. So anyway, that's all I have to say. I'm, I'm to open up these businesses. Let's move on, and we're going to end up closing our whole county down.
Thank you, Jan. I appreciate all your comments, because I think we all feel the same. We're all bound by this invisible plague that's been put upon us. We all look at it in a different way, and how to, how to protect one another. I had a call from a lady today. Over half her family is in healthcare. She looks at it completely differently than a lot of other people do, because she sees it, and her, and her children, and, and, and her children's spouse, I mean, all over her family, they, they see this every day, and they understand it. My heart cries out for everybody that wanted to call in tonight. My heart cries out for every person in Graca County, you know. I like to go out and have coffee with my buddies. I mean, I, I do, I, I want the gyms to be open. I want every business to be open. But I understand, at the same time, by, by being a leader, sometimes you got to just say, what is in our privy? What can we do? And there's certain things we can do. For instance, as of 11 o'clock today, our emergency, through our emergency management, and the good graces of the city of Ithaca and their fire chief, we've passed out in this county, 34,216 individual pieces of PPE. Now, that's an amazing number. And they're to be commended for that. They're working overtime. They're, they're putting themselves on the line to go to nursing facilities, hospitals, every fire station, MMR, everybody's got as much equipment as we could get to them. The county, when we first started, I almost had a heart attack. We run into, the EOC was ordering stuff, and I'm thinking, how are we going to get rid of all that? Well, not only have we gotten rid of all that, we've had to resupply. So I see the side of it, that everybody's working hard, and the public's been working hard, everybody's been working hard, so we can get by this. And I understand that everybody's mad. I understand the, the situation with the, with the Constitution, and understand how you all feel. But laws are laws, and governments are governments, and elections make a difference. All right? That's all, that's all you can think about. You've got to be able to, if this is what's happening this time, then we'll have to lobby to change the laws, so we can do something different the next time. But these are the laws that we are currently under. Our prosecutor, I've talked to him, I've talked many times with our good sheriff, he, he's, Sheriff, he's between a rock and a hard spot all the time, trying to, trying to maintain the public peace, but at the same time, helping people out to do as much as they can. I mean, so I understand, I used to run a business, I understand how it is to run a business, and how to be in the brink of bankruptcy. I understand all that. And it's not good. It's not fun. I can remember many nights not being able to sleep. I remember all that. So please, when you look at us, we make decisions, we make decisions for all the people of Graca County. And I know you provide stuff for everybody in this county. I understand that. But it's just going, I understand, and we're going to try to get as open as much, as fast as we can. But we have to do it under the law. And that's, that's all I've got to say. But I, I know a lot of you people that called in, and you know my heart, I'm listening. All right. Let's go back. Anybody, has anybody else called in yet? Matt, want to talk?
I do have one more comment from the gym in St. Louis.
I didn't hear.
That's Dan.
I do have one more comment from the gym in St. Louis.
Okay, go ahead.
I have been emailing the governor's office. I've been trying to contact state representatives. I've been on the phone with Chief Ramirez in St. Louis, trying to do several things to save our business. The order that she puts says, no more than 10 people, yes, says gyms, fitness centers, and that should be closed. It also says outdoors should kill the virus in a matter of seconds. I proposed to the city of St. Louis, me renting a big 40 by 80 tent with no sides, put my equipment outside under that tent, at 10 foot apart per piece of equipment, and allowed no more than whatever the number per square footage, and was told I would be prosecuted if I did that.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that, but I understand. Okay, thank you for your comment. And I see a lady on the screen. I don't know who you are.
Is it me?
I think so. Yeah.
My name is Deb Dusick, and my husband and I own Burford Plumbing and Heating in Ithaca.
Sorry, I didn't recognize you, Deb.
Um, I'm, I'm going to read. I want to say that I know that your decisions are big, and I respect all of you who wear the decision-making shoes. I know we all have different circumstances, and we all have different opinions. My one question to all of you with regard to opening businesses in Graca County is, at what point do we take into consideration that the harm of keeping businesses closed is bigger than the benefits? I'm not blind, I'm not heartless about the dangers of the virus, but I do believe that some of the truths are not being considered when decisions are being made. Believe it or not, people are hurting and dying, not from COVID, but from the decisions being made on the heels of COVID. I would not want to be in Sam's shoes in comforting a family who could only have a handful of loved ones at a funeral. Again, I do want to just ask you, what are the benefits, and what are the harms? And again, do the benefits outweigh the harm, or is it the other way around? Thank you.
Thank you, Deb, appreciate it. Okay, you don't see anybody else currently?
George?
Yeah.
This is Yvette. If I can just add one more comment.
Go ahead.
I just want everybody to know that I have been on the phone continuously with Senator Outman on the situation. And I was at the protest on April 30th, where legislators were meeting with Governor Whitmer to decide on whether to extend the executive order that did end on April 30th at 11:59 PM, or to not vote. And from what I understand, from multiple legal counsel throughout Michigan, and Senator Outman, that the executive order that was in place did in fact expire on April 30th at 11:59 PM, and therefore, any other executive order thereafter is illegal, because of the fact that she did not follow the correct legislative process to continue on, okay? So I, at that point in time, did contact Senator Shirkey's office. So to Tim Lambrecht's comment about what Senator Shirkey said yesterday, that was an article that was written, and I did talk to them, his office, and, you know, asked him why he was making that comment that we need to follow the executive orders that were recently released, when, in fact, on the protest, they did not vote to extend. So I was quite confused as to how they didn't vote to extend, but then he is advocating we need to follow the executive orders recently released. And said that that article was not written correctly, and it was misconstrued what he meant. So with all of that said, again, I'm glad that Deb Dusick asked that question. At what point in time is our council that we elect going to stand for the Constitution, although, George, you mentioned that it's the law? But when the Constitution is being violated, and we see our economy is also being mutilated, and people's lives are put at risk, at what point in time we look to our elected officials who campaigned and said that they would always stand on the Constitution and defend the people, at what point in time are you guys going to be able to stand up and look at everything that's been done, rather than just taking the voice of the attorney general, which, by the way, Officer Mueller was at my business and said that Prosecutor Keitha Pushen had contacted attorney general yesterday, who told him that the legislative did in fact vote to extend the executive order past April 30th to May 15th. I did contact Senator Rick Outman thereafter, and Rick Outman said that was false. So while I'm conveying all of this to you, it's serious, the situation that we're in, and we really need to look at all of this information, before we believe everything the attorney general is advocating or guiding you on, which I believe, according to all of my contacts and information I'm receiving from powers that be, which I doubt they would lie, that what is, what is being done and how we're being treated is for a bigger agenda to destroy our economy. So I ask you guys, for especially Sam and Tim, you guys have businesses, are you willing to lose yours for the, the narrative that's being kicked out possibly in a false manner? I'm not willing to lose mine. I have, like I said, spent $20,000 of my hard-earned money to buy the business, and I also have a $20,000 bank loan I have to pay on from the equipment in my gym. And I don't have the money coming in for that. So, you know, I would really like it if you guys would seriously consider defending the people of the county of Graca. That is your job. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, Ben.
I, I'd like to respond just real quick to that. We took an oath to the Constitution. We also took an oath to obey the laws of Michigan. And, and we're not having people calling us and telling us, this is one thing, and that's another thing. We have a printed order, and I have the printed order that come from my association, from the attorney general's office, that's in writing, that says, we're following those rules, and we're upholding her, her, her right to do this. I mean, so that's, that's in writing from the attorney general's office on their letterhead. It's not, I called somebody, and they said this, and somebody maybe told you a story about that. We have it in writing, and, and we can't, I just don't believe this, our, our body can change the rules or the laws of this state. I, I just don't think we can do that, as much as I'd like to. As much as I'd like to say, everything is fine, and let's just, just get back to normal. And I want to do that as soon as possible. But.
Yeah, Sam, I assume after, after, hopefully soon, this is all over with, there's going to be a lot of lawsuits.
I gotta believe.
Sue people. I mean, sue, there's going to be suits everywhere.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we have to go by what we know. And so, I appreciate it, Sam.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on. And then there will be one more time to respond to public comments at the end of the meeting, and it's not going to take that much longer. So, okay. Consideration of new business. Jennifer, are you still on the line? Jennifer Wood? She was there. You want to check?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You're up.
All right. All right. So I'm here asking for an approval on a temporary contract for Laura Beaver. I don't know if all of you know, but as of March 20th, she left her full-time position as our referee for the friend of the court. And in light of the situation we're in, we have not had much response in regard to our postings to try to fill the position. So I'm, I contacted Laura, and she's willing to come back on a contractual basis for up to 20 hours a week. It probably won't be that many hours, in order to start having some of our hearings not fall into any more backlog than they already have. She'll be conducting those remotely for the most part. And so that's what I'm presenting today is the contract for 20 hours a week for Laura Beaver for $40 an hour. And, I'm sorry, I just lost my train of thought. I guess that's all I'm.
The pay, the, the pay is covered, you, you got that in there, and?
That was it. Thank you. Yes. Because we're not paying out the position, a full-time position, we have money.
Yeah, it's covered in the budget, so.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Do we have any questions for Jennifer?
No, you stated it in the contract that this is, you know, she is a contracted position. So not only would we not be providing any fringes, but we're not paying her social security or Medicare. She's an independent contractor, so she's going to have to pay that in, on her own, so.
Yes, that's true.
Jennifer, I just had a quick question. I'm looking at it, when it said the, there's a 67% grant. So was this position, when we had it full-time, was funded by a grant, the 67% or whatever?
Yeah, the, the whole friend of the court, anything that has to do and can be connected to child support, is funded back to the county at 67%, including the positions. And the contractual position will do that as well.
And this position is just for Graca? We don't share this position in Clinton?
Correct. Just Graca.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Jennifer?
I'll take a motion.
We go forward to that. Support. Motion's moved, supported. Any other discussion? Ask the clerk to call a roll.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambrecht?
Yes.
And Commissioner Bailey?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Be safe.
Thank you, you too.
All right. Next, Board of Cameriers. Ferris Azim, is that the name, Chuck?
Aziz.
Aziz, okay, Ferris Aziz.
Remember, we had two on the list back before, and we chose Vicky Salisbury, and, so he's reapplied.
Okay. So we have that for the Board of Cameriers. So without question, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Support and any other discussion? All in favor, signify. If I'm saying aye.
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 Aye, well, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Roll call. Yeah, you caught us off guard.
I'm so used to it.
Okay, Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambrecht?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes. Very good.
Hey, just real quick, Chuck, I got a question about this. You have so many positions on this, and are they all filled? Do we have everybody for this election?
I think so. Ask Angie for sure.
We do, yes. Vicky Salisbury, and now Ferris will be for the Republicans, and we have Mary Ann Justin and Jim, James Holmes for the Democrats.
All righty.
Okay, very good. Do we have any unfinished business that I know of? Okay. One more time for additional public comments.
Hey, George, it's Vera.
Yeah.
I, I'd just like to echo your comments. Kudos to the Emergency Operations Center, and Dan Morton, Mike Saltis. When this pandemic come down, I dedicated another full-time deputy to the Emergency Operations Center. And, and they've been a godsend with getting out all this PPE equipment to nursing homes, police and fire, the hospital, et cetera. So I'd just like to echo your comments. Kudos to the EOC people down there. Also, you spoke that, you know, my office is between a rock and a hard spot, and that's true. I don't know how many calls we had in the first week about this business is opening, that business is open, how come they're open, how come they're open? What it boiled down to is a lot of tattling on, and everybody. And so I had to send my guys out there to investigate whether these were essential businesses or not. And fortunately, you know, we didn't cite anybody. Most businesses had their ducks in a row that they had to be open for this or that. And we just noted it in a report, sent it down to central dispatch, if we had any more calls on that business, this is what we had figured out. But, you know, when you look in the grand scheme of things, that is not really what my officers signed up to do when they went through a police academy, and become officers, you know, to go. and become mobsters, you know, to go business to business, make sure that they were adhering to, you know, the rules of the governor and, but yeah, it does put us between a rock and a hard spot because if we was ever fined, i.e. the gym that was open yesterday, you know, LMPD went in there and they didn't cite any tickets, but the prosecutor is the chief law enforcement official of the county and if he decides to swear out a complaint against a business owner, initiate that and, you know, we're not doing the citations, so. It's small business owners here in the county and I don't want to see anybody fail, you know? But in the same token, you know, that you try to keep everybody safe too and that's what we've done through the EOC, so that's all I have and thanks, everybody, for your work.
Hey, Mike?
Jane, go ahead.
I just want to tell you, Mike, thank you for all the hard work that you do do. I know you guys work hard.
Thank you, Jan, I appreciate that.
Mike, I want to say one thing, as a business owner, they had called me when they got all this PPE stuff in and I said, "Oh, jeez, I just bought some stuff," you know, and to stock up and we carry a lot of it. And, but I did run low and I thought, "Well, I'll call up there and see what they have and if I'm going to buy it, I might as well buy it from the county so we would help get our money back." And they were great to say, "Come on up and get what you need here." They wrote it down, you know, they're going to bill us and then some of it comes from the federal government or whatever, I guess they're going to bill us or something, but they were real good to work with and it was just great to be able to come here and get it and not have it shipped in from Boston or wherever we get our stuff from and they were real accommodating.
I appreciate that, Sam. Them guys down there that are working at the EOC are top-notch.
Yeah.
Once again, I truly, truly thank all of the first responders and emergency managers. We had people that stepped up, did a lot of volunteer work and if it wasn't for Dave Nelson and his inventory ability in the hardware store for 50 years, we'd be a deep doo-doo. This guy took everything he had, put it down on paper and then Chad Russo was one of, is one of the sheriff's officers, he assigned him down there. I tell you what, he's a great young man. I got to know him over the last few weeks. A lot of people don't know, I go to the EOC every day, check on them, make sure if things are right, anything they need. Come to the courthouse, do the same thing, so. We're working, we're working every day to try to keep people safe and I truly am trying to work every day to try to put more people back to work in Grashit County, so. Is there any other public comments? Does anybody come online? I hate to miss anybody.
I haven't seen anybody else come and the number is 47 now, so if anything, we've lost people.
Okay, all right, well, I just wanted to make sure.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Heather Mills. And I have actually four businesses, three of which are fitness centers and the golf course Hidden Oaks, that have all been affected by this. And first and foremost, I want to say thank you for all the work that you guys are doing and for having this for us. And the one thing that kind of really strikes to me is making sure that the proper procedures are put in place as we reopen. And owning three fitness centers, for us to think that we can simply, you know, unlock the doors and say, "Come on in" and operate as we did, that's not what's going to happen and that's not what should happen. So just as you stated and had the protocol that you were going to be doing for temperature checking people, gyms should be no different. When people come into the gym, obviously they're sweating, they're using multiple pieces of equipment. So different, you know, policies and procedures need to be put in place to ensure everyone's safety. And, you know, not just the members, but the employees, the staff and the community. So I know it's a pain, it's a financial hardship, but I think it's something that, you know, definitely needs to be looked at. And I've been in contact with several other franchise locations throughout other states that have opened that are following, you know, those specific guidelines on going through and opening in stages with the limited capacity based on square footage. So I think if those are things that you guys are doing on, you know, our local level for, to ensure your safety, those are things that we should also be definitely doing in a gym and workout setting as well. So, you know, I understand the other gyms and the hardships were all there, but there needs to be some common sense. Like I said, it can't just be, "Open the doors, come on in and here you go." And that needs to be across the board, that those restrictions and that safety, those safety measures are put in place. So whether the governor's order gets extended, again, that's something that we'll have to look at and wait and see. I believe in our Constitution, I believe in our freedoms, you know, don't get me wrong there. But I also believe that taking care of the safety of our community, our members has to be paramount and top priority as well. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I might add that I do know that our local health department is working on those guidelines and they should be done shortly, within the next few days even. Then they will be just assimilating them out to different businesses so when you know what to do when you do open, so that everybody's on the same page, so nobody's guessing. Those will be guidelines.
Correct, and then also because I am a franchise owner, obviously I have guidelines that are specifically set forth by the franchisor as well. So I received the 26-page document today of reopening procedures that we have to follow. The infrared thermometers have been ordered, so an extra PPE, things of that nature. So, I mean, I know we're going to reopen, it's just going to look different and I think people just need to, again, be patient. I know it's tough, you know, it's financially hard. Even having the golf course open on a limited basis, it's tough and there's a lot of people that are going through it, but, you know, if everybody stands together as a community, we'll make it through.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Matt, you see?
I don't see anybody else, but I think I do work, just reminding people with that, star six to unmute themselves.
Well, and make sure that we put that on the website. If we have to meet again, to try to do that. And how can we, the only thing I can say is if they have a comment, try to reach out to their local commissioner. They have the numbers, it's in the, you know, if they have a local commissioner, every commissioner here would be glad to take the call and listen to you and see if we can help in any manner at all, so. I just, you know, that's what we're here for. All righty. Is there anything else from the board?
Well, I'd just like to thank everybody who called in and have been waiting. You know, as a government speaker for 30 years, you know, I always encourage people to participate. And, you know, I think on this particular issue, you know, nobody's going to make everybody happy. I got three emails prior to the meeting and two of them were from business owners, one was a citizen and they were all concerned about the resolution, you know, they were opposed to the resolution. Everybody here pretty much, you know, spoke, most of the people, you know, who spoke were for some type of action. And I think it is a, it's a darned if you do, darned if you don't question. But I think the thing that I'd like to express to people is, I mean, it's great, you can talk to us and we have, you know, we have a conduit to the governor and to the legislature through the Michigan Association of Counties, you know, that's, they've been in Lansing while our legislators have been home, you know, pretty much every day, you know, talking to the governor representing the interests of counties much in the same way that, as you might guess, most of the business lobby groups have had people down in Lansing, you know, trying to get, you know, their business represented. And even though I know sometimes it seems like nobody's listening, I do think, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. You know, I don't remember who mentioned that, Rick said, "We'll talk to you like local government." You know, I know Rick very well and I've known him for a long time, but I kind of want to say, if Rick was on the call, I'd say, "Hey, Rick, that's kind of passing the buck, the buck's not, you know, this is state, this isn't county." You know, we don't get paid the big bucks at the level that you're at. You know, and so, you know, you need to be, you know, working with the governor and trying to get this stuff figured out. But I know, I know people are, you know, are listening and the more people that express an opinion, the, you know, the more likely we'll get what we want, whatever that is.
Remind everybody that's still on here, within the next few days, this meeting will be put on YouTube so that you can tell your friends or anyone you want to listen to it, it will be on YouTube. So we've been putting them on YouTube. So that's another place that they can hear it. And, you know, we're not going anywhere, so invite your comments. Anything else? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Support.
Done, thank you, appreciate you all coming in.
Take care, see y'all.
Yep, bye, have a good week.
Bye.